I'd like to call this meeting in the Lancaster County Committee of the whole to order. I ask that the clerk note that a quorum and council is present, that the public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted for the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. I'd like to welcome everyone here to your Lancaster County Council Meeting Committee of the whole. I'd ask that you take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers. Thank you for not wearing any hats or caps in the council chambers, and please consider it of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I'd ask that we please stand and join council for the pledge of allegiance followed by the implication giving this afternoon by council member Alan Blackman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow our heads, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this chance that we have to come together and do the business of the county. Lord, be with this council, be with our citizens, Lord, be with our state, our country, and especially, Lord, be with Israel during this time of crisis for them. Lord, we just ask you give us wisdom. We ask that you forgive us of our many sins. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Thank you for attending. Do we have any changes or deletions to the minutes? I mean, to the, to the agenda, not the minutes. We haven't got that far. If not, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Moss Deller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Graham. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, now we come to citizens comments. We do have one member, one person signed up for it. Please bear in mind that this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. Mr. John Baker.
My name is John Baker, 2293 New Hope Road, He Springs. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm here to speak to you about problems of traffic and illegal parking and stopping issues in vicinity of fire stations, and in particular in the vicinity of McDonald Green. Every morning and every afternoon, parents have their cars lined up from McDonald Green all the way down to Jones Crossroads and around on Saddle Road, including in front of the McDonald Green Fire Department. I have been going back and forth with the sheriff's department and with the fire marshal since 2014, every year, and it's the same every year. Nothing has changed. This is a safety issue. If the fire department is a couple of minutes delayed in responding to a fire, somebody is going to lose their house or maybe lose their life, and the county and the school district will be responsible. Because sitting there, and this has been reported over and over and over again, I've even reported it to Mr. Marstall, and nothing has changed. It's been 10 years and nothing has changed. Something has got to be done. There's a handout that all of you have that I prepared, that one of the things it mentions in the state statute is that this parking and stopping is not allowed when properly signposted. I went to three fire stations today, Belltown, McDonald Green, and Rich Hill. Are there any signs on the road saying no stopping or parking? No, sir. And I seriously doubt that there is a sign at any fire station in Lancaster County. I don't know whose responsibility it is to put up that signage. Is it the county? Is it state? I have no idea. I don't care. That's not my problem. My problem is that the fire station is being blocked. It is putting people's lives at risk, and I want it stopped. Whatever has to be done, I want it stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, we'll move on to our first item, item 6A, information technology, IT department updates. Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Vice Chair and council member Scott comes forward. We wanted to have this on the agenda item tonight, and Scott will highlight that we made a transition in our IT department where we did have a lot of outside consulting support over basically the past three to four years. We've transitioned with council's support to more in-house structure to manage our growing IT operations. And so today, got an opportunity for Scott to highlight that transition and really look to the future as well, to highlight the investments that we're making in this department. So, turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Dennis, Vice Chairman, members of council. I have a very short deck here, maybe seven slides that I just want to give an update on what have we done with some of those funds? What has IT focused on? Where do we stand? Give you just a real, you know, a broad overview of IT, right? And I want everybody to, you know, know where does our funds go and what are we focusing on? So, the very first slide here I've got shows that with the money we were spending a year and the salaries of the in-house staff that is, that is with fringe. So, we have reallocated those funds to cover the four roles that we have there. We bought some security software that we use, and we still have operational support that's filling the knowledge gaps that we still don't currently have. And at any time, if you guys need to ask anything, please just feel free. What we've been working on this year, and by this year, I'm talking from fiscal last year until now, right? So, one of the first things, our main focus has been on increasing our security posture. As you guys know, we've, you know, we've had to deal with some rough times, we've had to deal with things we shouldn't have had to. So, our first prioritization was on servers and PCs. So, what we're focusing on is getting those up to date. That's patches, that's the vulnerabilities, that's anything that we need to do to stop us if there was a zero-day attack, something that we can easily mitigate and/or stop, right? The second thing is we're standardizing our software. So, one of the things that you'll see over here that I'll talk about next is a policy. So, nobody is allowed to get any software that without us seeing it, vetting it, and verifying, because we are finding we're having redundancies and sometimes three or four of the same software, or software that does the same thing, a roster board. So, one of my goals that I've been assigned to do is look and see how we can maximize our use for applications and stuff like that. Our cybersecurity, we actually had our first full-year mandatory tour of reining done, and anybody new that comes in, they have 30 days, they have to do it. We finally can check that box in our annual auditing, so nobody else is excited about that, but I am very stoked. Fishing, so that's the normal, yeah, that's the normal, like, what we do to test. So, what we do with this is a fishing campaign is just something that we test out and say, hey, please click on this. We now have a way that we can target our end users that are, you know, that need that extra help to help identify and verify. Cybersecurity software, I'll go into that next slide. So, what we're also working on is our fleet. So, we're working hand in hand with fleet. We now have something called Felidio and Geotab. What that mainly is, is that's so that our fleet operations has a way now that they can track and monitor anything wrong in a vehicle. So, they no longer have to depend on somebody bringing it in five, 10,000 miles past a due if there's something wrong. They are aware so they can proactively fix the fleet. Geotab, all those are just two pieces of software that ties it in. We are putting dash cams, so the EMS ambulances, we bought nineteen, we already have two out there. We're going to be putting that forward because that's something that, you know, that helps us because with the wrecks and stuff like that, that helps us provide. Key Cafe, the final piece with fleet is, right now, when you need to book a county vehicle, which we have a very few left, we have, I think, only four right now in our pool, you would have to try to get with Donna, try to get with somebody to get it reserved in here. This ream lines that this takes some of that workload off. It's an online base now. You can check out the car, you come to these boxes, it will take a picture of you to see who actually got the key, and when you bring it back, it takes a picture. So, it's a good way that we can. One of the things we focused on is our service desk, our service desk support, we, one of our senior techs, we've actually made a senior technician role, Riley James. I'm pretty sure everybody knows Riley, love him. What this does is this provided an escalation of tickets. So, we have a service desk, and as you guys know, most of my staff is a year or, or less, and now provides the path that if tier one cannot get it, Riley can focus in on those key, key, key points. Another thing, which, you know, something that I'm per route of, which I'm actually proud of all of these, but the policies, the very first thing we have to have in place is policies. The first two on here have been adopted, they're in place now. The third one is waiting to be adopted. That was because we have individuals in the county that have achieved a career milestone or goal, PhD, they have some type of certification that they want. We now have a formal policy that you can submit that, it could be on your signature, so that people are recognized for all the hard work that they do. We have 14 other policies that we're just waiting to get further adopted, and we'll be good there. And ARPA, you guys approved $3 million in ARPA funds. We've got seven of the 10 done. The three we have left is GIS, which we're just waiting to move the databases over, our network overhaul, and the one for register of deeds, that's working with BIS on that. So, any questions on this slide? You guys look super.
Scott, real quick, on the fleet maintenance there, if a truck was out in the Walmart parking lot all day, would y'all know that it's there, and would you know that it's been there all day?
So, yes. So, this was the pilot run of this, so out of, I don't want to misspeak on the, on the, out of the high volume of vehicles that we have, this is in a very few. It's in the IT vehicles, the sheriff's office, he was, it's in every single one of theirs. Outside of that, it's probably only in 15 other cars, just, just, just because of the funds. This was our first year. If it, if it wasn't going to work out, we didn't want to invest. But, so the short term is yes. This system is a GPS geolocating system that can show you that also, right? So, it can show you what's wrong with the car, but it can show you that Scott sat at this light, or Scott did 100 miles per hour on this road. I mean, it has, it can do a lot, right? It's one of the newer ones. Anything else? And of course, I don't, just in case you guys are curious. So, I did want to highlight these two things here. So, the security software, the table, the pie chart on the left, that shows you when we had this, you know, new fiscal year started, we had 503 critical updates/vulnerabilities, which meant that these were known threats that is easily to exploit, it can cause problems. In the couple of months that we bought this and had my cybersecurity analyst on it, we are, we are down to three, right? So, we're, we are not there, we are working towards it, but our posture as a whole has, is significantly better, right? This is, I really wanted to take this time just to point out to, to you guys that when I kept saying we were, it was not in a good space, we are getting there, and we are making leaps and bounds. The second thing was, I want to be able to provide you all once a year, this is our baseline. So, that fishing camp, campaign, that once a year, you can see it was sent out to a little over 700 people, only 55 right now reported it that, hey, something isn't right. The 233 open is not a big deal as the, like, in my outlook, I always preview mail, that's considered. But the one big thing is that when people did open it up, what I would like to show you is this time next, next year, the volume of report it's up, and preferably, nobody opens this here.
Hey, Scott, can you, can you go back to that slide for a minute?
Yes.
Because I want to highlight something that the graphs seem to overlook, or they don't highlight as much. So, can you go through the actual numbers of the critical, high, medium, low, and info vulnerabilities that existed in July versus where we're at in October? Because I think that those numbers actually tell a vastly different story than what the graphs seem to show.
Okay, yeah. So, like Councilman Louis said, so we had in Ju- July, critical threats, and I'm going to have to read it off of here because I can't see that far. Critical threats was five, 503. As of October 2nd, there's only three. High threats was 2,561, there's now only to Winnie. Medium threats, 1,811, there is 136. Low was 200 into Winnie eight, there is now zero low threats. And the info, which is just normally, they recommend, hey, this is something we, you might want to do, there's zero in, zero. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything to ask? Okay. All right. So, this is a overview of our, of our organization chart as it currently stands. As you'll see, the four roles that were filled was the server technician, cybersecurity analyst, service desk technician, and network technician. Our server tech actually started Monday. So, we still do have one role open. Everybody with the red banner on it, with the red border, is where we filled those roles at. In November of last year, we had 13 staff. Right now, we currently have 17, with that person starting as 18. We are in IT size and colluding myself of 19. Any questions? All right. So, I've got a couple more slides left here. What I'm trying to provide is a brief outline and a roadmap of some of the other roles that we are looking to fill. These roles, as anybody knows, in management, the more staff you have is always very fun to manage. But when we look at an organizational standpoint of where we are now and where we need to, to be, that's what you guys are going to see in these next slides here. So, if you want to, I can go in depth on each one, I can hit the bullet points, but I'll start with broad overview, and please just chime in. GIS technician, we are making massive strides this year with Allison onboard. We are looking to heavily vest in our ESRI product that we purchased and that we've been paying for. We have a GIS manager now, Jim. He is great, but he doesn't, we need more staff to help supplement him. Jim has been in GIS for over 30 years. We need something that can, I can help elevate Jim to start focusing on how do we maximize why somebody can do the actual day-to-day work, what Jim keeps having to do. The data analyst, that's one of our goals that what we're trying to do here is, like these graphs and charts, we have a lot of data. The county really has no good way to present that data. Like, every decision that I try to do is a data driven, right? I can show you, I can show you the stats, I can show you what we're seeing live on our side. We have nobody that can help build that across the board. So, one of those roles was going to be if we can not only help present my data to you in an easier way, but also help every department be able to. The database administrator, this is something right now that we are sorely lacking, we have to outsource everything that we do with this. I do have my server technician working on this, but we don't have time. This is, this is one of the things, so right now, we're trying to write some stuff over from one GIS server to a next. We, we have to pay. So, we're already having to utilize outside sourcing, and then we run into the problems where they're here just to help, they're not here to do the day-to-day, I guess, if that makes sense. The next three roles would be the cybersecurity analyst. There is enough work right now on my cybersecurity analyst that I have. His name is Xavier. He is finishing his PhD. I would like to be able to, like, GIS. I need Xavier helping me focus on not only the current threats that we have now, but how do we harden and move forward? I'm looking for an analyst to help him out, support those day-to-day operations. Application developer, once again, we don't have anybody in-house that can write anything. Everything that we do, we have to pay. We have to pay for, and we get a little bit back on our return, because we have to be very specific, very outlined, and if it doesn't work, we have to change the scope, so now we're paying more. And the final role is a system admin. We're moving heavily cloud-based right now, so this, this role will actually manage the operation team. As you saw on the org chart, we kind of have pseudo roles for, for it now, but I'm having too many people wearing too, too many hats. So, what this does is this helps us focus on our virtualization, helps us focus on our cloud, but can also be somebody that can help manage our, our more, you know, our more operational team, our servers and our net, and networkers. Anybody have any questions on the roles or anything? Mr. Luis, I'm looking at you, I figured you had something.
I don't have it on the roles, but I guess one of the things that I'm thinking about is, have you all started looking at what opportunities we have with AI? And kind of working with each of the departments to determine what those opportunities are in each department, and how things like Microsoft Fabric or Microsoft Copilot could help add some efficiencies and make things a little easier for everyone?
So, we just had during our department meeting last week, we just had our chat, I gave a per presentation on AI and how it can, and it was just as simple as ChatGPT right, right now. But yes, we, we have a couple of applications that leverage AI, but there is a lot. There's a lot of opportunity there. One of our policies is an AI policy that people, states don't put, you know, don't put proprietary, don't put personal information. So, yes, that is on the roadmap, sir.
I was about to ask about that policy, because that's probably the first thing that we need to do, and probably work with Jenny for those exact reasons that you just mentioned. So, thank you. I'd love to see kind of what those opportunities are and what the, the future can hold for this county.
Yep, okay. Sounds great. Anybody else? Mr. Moss Deller, you look like.
Yeah, I just want to commend you on, you know, on the progress you're making. Things are looking better, a lot better, so we, we're really excited about that, and we can see where our money went, and it's paying off, so.
We, we have a really good team. I mean, I, I would like to say it's all me, but that's a lie, right? We, we do, I have, I have a really good staff. We, it's hard for us to find people because of where we're at, and some of it is the pay, but the ones that we have is, is great. So, one of the things, hopefully this coming year too, we can start working on retention, you know, even if it's as simple as we have server technicians, one, maybe we have server tech, two, something that the staff can work towards just so we can keep them there. Because everybody have loves, we, we all love the work. It's just, you know, people want to know, well, what are you going to do with me in a couple of years? So, right now, we don't, we don't have that, but I have two or three members that I don't want to lose if we can start working towards giving them a plan, giving them something to work towards. The last slide I got is just, I wanted to give you guys a really finalized update on where we're, what are we looking for, what is coming down the pipe, right? So, the first one is, this is the first ever grant that IT themselves have put in for. We're not using 911 funds, we're not looking for BOC, UWASI funds, right? FEMA has a cybersecurity grant here. So, one of the last pieces of software we talked about for cybersecurity was a SIM. We put in for, not, you know, it's going to take a little bit to hear what we get back, but that, if we can get that grant, that's 142,000 that we don't have to spend. So, I'm really, really excited about that. That will be the first one that we've done, and hopefully, that's not going to be the last. The 911 server overhaul, you guys approved this, this fiscal year. We have the hardware on site. This is what's going to provide redundancy, so if the 911 center goes down there, we can simultaneously, but that's not accurate, you know, we can just about simultaneously stand it up here. There will be minutes of downtime, but that makes me feel a lot better on that right there. Because, you know, we, we have many points of a single point of failure, this is the first step of getting us to where we're going to be comfortable. The .gov, so as you guys know, we use LancasterCountySC.net or LancasterSC.net. We will be transitioning to a true .gov. Per the registrar, we have to use our full name, so it will be LancasterCountySC.gov. That's for a security standpoint, that's from a branding standpoint, so that is a slow rollout that, but what that means is your mail, what you have now, will always still work, just anything new that you send out, we'll put that .gov on the end. We're not there yet, I'm still working with marketing, because everybody that has their business cards and all that stuff, all that's going to have to change, you know, eventually. So, we didn't, first step was, we got it, we're registered, my, my mail address is actually will come from a .gov. I was the beta tester guinea pig on that, that was not a good decision on my part, but it's working great now. The strategic plan, if you guys know.
Mr. Hernandez, before you, could you back up the 911 server?
Yep.
And expand on the cost of that, so council has an understanding?
Yes.
And then some of the timeframe on that?
Okay. So, the cost of that server, so through the 911 grant, they pay 80% of what was going to be used at 911, and the total cost, Dennis, don't hold me to the penny, but it was 930-some thousand. The 400-and-some thousand that was at 911 center, they paid for 80% of that whole cost through a grant. Because we're putting it up here at the admin building, and we can use it for other things, they're paying 80% of 50%. So, simple math, if it's 400 grand, 200 grand of that, they're paying 80% of. So, the, the majority, the lion's share, I think the county was like three and a quarter, 350. 350, I think it was, out of the 900-and-some thousand. The time, the timeframe for it is, we're actually doing the kickoff now, we physically have the stuff on-site, we still got to rack it, we still got to set it up, and then we got to migrate everything over. So it will be, depending on the holidays, we would hope by the end of December, but it could be maybe right into January because of the holidays coming up.
Scott, the GOV domain conversion, why did we decide to get down that road?
So we've never been a .gov as a government entity. I get especially a lot of times because our domain is a LancasterCountySC.net, so as a government entity, we're not using our .gov. So part of the cybersecurity recommendation this year we've got was the, and there was actually funding for it, I wish I would have known, I would have waited. But the reason we're going towards it is for identity, for security, and for branding purposes. So that's why we're moving towards the .gov.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Sorry, when you said, if you would have known, what would have helped you to have known earlier?
The, the state, when they came out with their grant stuff, like we, you know, we don't have as far as IT, and I don't know what we have at admin building, we don't have anybody with grants, so we're not in the loop, like nobody lets us know even what's coming down the pipe. So I literally got something, was talking with the FEMA stuff, one of the things on there was they would pay for the .gov.
Who, who normally manages that in other counties, like to provide that information or obtain that information and make sure that it's disseminated to the staff?
Generally, there's a grant department that helps with that. I know the sheriff, I think, has some people that helps them write grants. I think we have it scattered around right, right now, but we don't.
It's piecemeal now, and we've talked about that. One of the things for an update is, yeah, right now it's piecemeal. And, but locally, it's generally heavy in the public safety. So FIRE does a lot of their own grants and there's some state grants that have been in place for 20 years, so it's kind of on a routine there. Sheriff's Department's the same, but there's some special grants that come up through federal Department of Justice as well as state. Those are generally known because they've been around for a while, but some of these new areas, even though it could be FEMA, the cybersecurity, we don't have a direct contact unless we're sniffing around or looking for grants. And so as you can see, Scott has done a great job on the cybersecurity grant, so we are trying to encourage our departments to look in some of their areas, like transportation, look in their areas and see if they are grant funding, particularly because the, I'm sorry, the ARPA funds and other things with the COVID funds, trying to make sure there's some other ones that we can tap into. So we've been pretty successful with the, even the skip grants and the RIA and other things, but as Scott said, we just got to keep our antenna up and see if we can learn that. But a coordinated grants program is something we'll probably discuss during the budget process.
Yeah, because the .gov only, like, we spent for the three years, it's like $1,200 or something, but still, if anything that I, that we can save spending as a county is more funds I can try to use for something else.
Having a good grant writer can pay for themselves in multiple spades. I mean, the school district has a grant writer that's probably brought in 100, 150 million dollars worth of grants in the time he's been writing them.
And it's not even just a grant writer, but just?
Yeah.
A grant researcher who knows where to find where those opportunities are and is connected to understand where those opportunities are.
Yes, yes. Because I, I feel there is other grant venues. Like I said, I've been working with Darren and the UWSI, which is in North Carolina. Now, it's, it's harder to get those funds, but that's still another venue, it's just, it's hard knowing what's coming down the pipe without trying to stand up. The last two things, the strategic plan that everybody approved up here that we're working towards, and then our ERP, our enterprise resource planning, so we're excited about that. That's, this is supposed to be the first year we're going to look for a consultant. I think the bid's out there now, and then we're going to start hopefully moving down the path of centralized resources and management, so that's going to be great. All right, well, if you guys are good with me, I'm going to step down.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to our next item. Item 6B, update on the comprehensive plan rewrite. Ms. Davis, nice to have you in front of us again.
Hi, everybody, I'm back. Okay, so exciting news, we have a draft of the comp plan, and you have it in front of you, hopefully. I think we bound some copies for you all. So really, my presentation's just going to give you a, a general outline, and then we'll be looking for comments from you all on this draft, hopefully in the next two months. We wanted to give you all time to review it. We'll have some public meetings hopefully in January prior to it coming to you, so we wanted to give you guys time to have time to kind of sift through it, but. So just in general, the draft plan outline, we've got an introduction that kind of goes through what is a comp plan, typical things you'll see in a comp plan, how to use it. Then we've broken it out into a countywide section as well as a panhandle section, a greater Lancaster section, and a southern Lancaster section, so we could really focus in on the differences that we're seeing in those areas and prioritize things that'll matter not only for the county as a whole, but how to address growth and lack of growth in the different areas of the county. And then at the end, we've got the plan elements, which a lot of those are, are the requirements for the state as to what we have to have in the document itself, but you'll find a lot of the data-driven points are in the plan elements in the back of the plan itself. But then in the plan areas, you're going to be seeing things that are prioritized for those specific areas. So guiding principles are things that you all saw in September of 2022, so we made sure to build our kind of implementation strategies and things based off of those guiding principles. A lot of those guiding principles also overlap with some of the things that we're seeing in the strategic plan, so you'll see services in there, a lot of mobility, prosperity, sustainability, things like that, all kind of fold into some of the same goals that we're seeing in the strategic plan. So we're trying to be active in making sure that our plans are cohesive and, and work together towards the same goal. So organizationally, again, we've got it broken out into different areas of the county, but from a layout perspective, you'll also see as you're going through the countywide implementation strategies and even in the area plan, specific implementation strategies, we've gotten out next to them the different guiding principles that are associated with each action. So you'll see like a G, a B, and S, all tying back to those guiding principles, so you can see throughout the plan how we're trying to address certain guiding principles and what, what plan implementation strategies are maybe things to really focus in on. If it hits seven of the, of the implementation goals, then maybe that's something we need to prioritize. So there's a lot of goals and supporting actions in this, a lot of them are going to feed into things that the planning department needs to do, a lot of them are going to be how we coordinate with other government agencies, how the UDO functions, recommendations as to what we should see in the new UDO, things of that nature. So as you go through, again, you'll just, you'll see the countywide implementation strategies, including managing growth, economic growth, sustainable transportation, resilient services. Each of those has supporting actions specifically broken out to address how exactly we want to see these things move forward. So for panhandle, growth management, connecting development, service needs, urban amenities, and then the supporting actions broken out under each of those. Greater Lancaster, balancing growth, we're seeing a lot of growth happening just outside of the city or the city growing itself. A traditional center, so how we can support downtown, even though we're not necessarily the city of Lancaster, we can still do things to help support the revitalization of downtown through county actions. Economic redevelopment and connecting destinations. And then in southern Lancaster, actually facilitating growth, we've seen some loss of, in, in past years in the census data and things like that, we're seeing some loss of population in some of the southern areas. So how we can actually help facilitate growth in the southern areas responsibly, supporting the communities and providing equitable services throughout the, the area. One of the key things that you guys probably see most often from the comp plan throughout the 10 years that the comp plan will be in place, hopefully, is the future land use. So if you'll recall the Strunk rezoning recently, you had a comprehensive plan amendment that's having to come through to resolve issues with the future land use map. This future land use map, we actively tried to be more specific than the last future land use map. So our last future land use map, I believe, had four overall topics that covered the entire county and trying to break the entire county into four different neighborhood, mixed use, covers a variety of different topics. So trying to be a little more specific in what the future land use categories are so that we as planning staff and you as council can make kind of responsible decisions towards where to, where to prioritize growth, where to place growth, and things of that nature. So these are the, the future land use categories, so we've got agriculture and timber, conservation, rural areas, neighborhoods, growth areas, core mixed use, economic development, master plan communities, mining, municipality, municipal growth areas. So master plan communities, this will also tie into the UDO with our PDDs that we are hoping to see in the new UDO that we talked about at the last committee of the whole meeting. So all of the old PDDs will be depicted as master plan communities, and hopefully when new PDDs come in with proposed PDDs under the new UDO, we'll have a comprehensive plan amendment to go along with it to resolve those and bring those into a master plan community in the future land use. So we can go through all of these in detail, we can also give you all time to kind of take this in, digest it, and then I'm happy to come back at another committee of the whole meeting if you all have more questions or things you would like to discuss. So one of the things that we did want to focus on in the panhandle was really prioritizing where we saw growth. And if you look at the definitions of all these different things, growth area actually has some specific language in there talking about having infrastructure, so we don't support rezonings in these areas until the necessary infrastructure is in place and things of that nature. So that's just something that's going to be important for the, for the panhandle area, trying to really focus in on where we see potential for growth areas and how we want those growth areas to function moving forward. Greater Lancaster, we've got obviously significantly more growth area, we've got a lot of growth that's happening in the greater Lancaster area that could help support some of the revitalization of downtown. And then in southern Lancaster, one of the biggest things you'll see is the municipal growth areas. So those are areas that are potentially, could potentially be served by the municipal, say, water and sewer from, for the city of He Springs or the town of Van White, or the town of Kershaw. So those are a few things. Next steps, we'll be looking at, again, a public plan review and engagement. So in January, we're hoping to have three public meetings, one in each sub-area, a few focus group meetings, more steering committee meetings, and then start the plan adoption process in quarter one of next year.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to say that I think one of the, to me, one of the important parts that we've done in this plan is we have established the three zones in the county, because even though we are collectively connected by our county boundaries, we have three very distinct areas and one size does not fit all, as we, as we've come to find out. And hopefully, some of the mistakes that we've made in the past, we can help alleviate as, as that growth moves down into some of the, in the other two lower areas. Are there any comments or questions of Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
You appear to have my house in the wrong location, the Adam Abbey House on historic markers. You got it way up at the top of the panhandle and it's not there, but that, I'm sure you can get that corrected.
We can, we can fix that. I think they pulled from a lot of the state information. One thing I forgot to note, but it's worth noting as you're going through it, because I know it'll be a comment, a lot of the data that's in here right now is from 2019. It will be updated before we adopt the plan. So when we started the plan, the most recent data we had was the 2020 census data, which you all know, the census in 2020 had some numbers that were not necessarily correlating with historical numbers, just hard to get good info during that time period. So we chose to use the 2019 information because it was more accurate to what we were seeing. Right now, the 2021 data is out, but the 2022 data comes out in December. So our goal is to, before we go through the adoption process, update the data points. It shouldn't change any of our recommendations or implementation strategies, it'll more just be the data points themselves, so. So that we're not adopting a plan that has numbers that are, say, five years out of date by the time it gets adopted. We will be updating those, but we just didn't want to go through the process of having the consultants do a full data update in 2021 and then do another data update before we adopt it.
When is the completion date for the comprehensive plan?
A lot of that's up to you guys. We're going to take, like I said, we're going to take it to the general public and try and get the last round of comments in January, and then as soon as we get that draft turned around, we'll bring it to you all for the full adoption process. So again, hopefully you'll see it, I would say, March timeframe.
And will it go hand in hand with the UDO?
So this predates the UDO significantly, so there's a lot of the implementation strategies as you're going through it, a lot of the implementation strategies in the UDO, in the comp plan make reference to direction that we should go in the UDO as far as things that need to be implemented into the UDO as part of the implementation strategies. So it will predate the UDO significantly, but yes.
And you did get my, just as a correction, Mr. Luis pointed out, I was looking at the wrong legend when I looked at it, so you got, you got it right.
But Mr. Graham, I think to your point about how does the UDO sync up, or how does the comp plan sync up the UDO, this is going forward, you will have a timeframe as well for the UDO that we have it on if we can stay on that track, if that's what's comfortable to break it up into pieces so you all can digest that. But we're giving you three months now to digest a comp plan, so you can have time to really think about that, take it to the public, and then we'll keep the UDO conversation on track as well. But they're moving in tandem, but we'll put the dates together to sync up.
Yeah, but it is, it is significant that you said that this is based on 2019 data. Well, a lot has changed and we're getting to 2024, which is five years from that data point.
Agreed, yeah. And so like I said, the implementation strategies themselves, I think we were, we've been working on those as things have changed. So most of the implementation strategies, I think you'll see in this, come from stakeholder engagement, staff recommendations, things that we heard from the public when we did our public surveys. So a lot of the implementation strategies shouldn't change, really shouldn't change at all as far as the data being updated, but we will have updated data so that what we are adopting is the best data available. But I just wanted you, while you were looking at the numbers and going through this, I knew it would be a comment that came up, so I wanted to flag it, that we've already, we are aware of it and we plan to update it, it's just not worth paying the consultant to update those numbers twice.
So and is this publicly available so that the citizens can kind of click a link and kind of take a look at it as well?
Not, not yet. So you all, the stakeholders, and our kind of joint county agencies are reviewing it right now. The planning commission will receive a copy at their next meeting. So it's technically in the record on this meeting because we're presenting it to you all, so it's available via that direction, but we hope to do the kind of full rollout with marketing and things like that in January when we're doing the public meeting.
But we can share this information?
It's, yeah, it's publicly.
Yeah, it's publicly available, okay.
One observation, is there any data in here referencing where water and sewer are located? Because that would be the driver of where we would expect to be planning in the future for.
So yes and no. Lancaster County Water Sewer District is relatively protective of their information and, and as they should be, there's some kind of legal implications and things for sharing a lot of the, the data as far as where your utilities are located. It presents some challenges from a cybersecurity standpoint, it presents some challenges from a kind of public safety, some, I hate to use the word terrorism, it's the word they use in their, their form that they have you fill out. So we have engaged with Lancaster County Water Sewer, they're on our stakeholder committee, they're aware of the conversations, they have had. They have had a lot of input into the future land use map and things of that nature. But as far as actually having maps of where exactly all the water and sewer lines are on, that's not something that they are comfortable with sharing.
Well, the other part is, I'm looking at 141, the housing occupancy change. Two observations down my way, it looks like we had 200, lost 296 housing units. How did we lose them? Did they go out in the woods and we're still searching for them or did they get destroyed?
No, so generally, that's more housing occupancy. So it's population based as opposed to unit based, generally speaking, but it's so you can see how many. Say it's not, it's not 100 people per se, but 100 houses of people is more how it's been presented.
Oh, that minus 296 area, you're looking at losing approximately 590 some odd people in that area?
Yes, sir. And there's, all of that information is in here. I just don't know what page is off, what page it's on off the top of my head. But yeah, as you go through it, we've got 186 pages of just baseline data, so not all of the baseline data is in the document itself. We pulled kind of the highlights from that. I believe we provided the copy of the baseline data back in September when we did our last, our September of 2022. So you should have a binder with that information, but I'm happy to make another one if you would like more information.
On 22, you have a map that shows some population change, but I read those numbers when I was reading the first part of this today. It is in there. It says different areas where they've lost population and other areas that have gained.
Yeah, so on page 25, in that same area that you were looking at, you have a population loss of about 913 people.
That's shown on page 22?
25.
25.
I just didn't flip back far enough.
If you take this population change on page 25 and add up all these numbers, we're almost correlating to, we are, we are seeing from 10 to, 2010 to 2020. So these numbers add up to the jump that we had up to 96,000 in the last 10 years if we added these numbers up?
So these should get to the 96,000. We're actually, based off of newest numbers, we're actually over 100,000 at this point. So the new data that will come in before you actually adopt this will have the updated numbers. But yeah, this should be the 96,000 timeframe as far as the 2020 to, 2010 to 2020 numbers. But then, like I said, the American Housing Survey, which is what we'll use for the next update, has the 110,000, I believe, is somewhere in the range that we're at or expected to be at.
What were we at 2010? Do y'all remember? 69,000?
I think that was probably close. We do know that, or we felt that the 2010 census was very much undercounted in a number of areas because all the leading data we had going up into the 2010 census was putting us around 101, 102,000 people. And then when the, when the actual count came back, we were...
2020 count, not 2010.
Right, 2020 count. We were much lower than what we had anticipated.
But even if you add, I mean, I'm just looking at the Panhandle, we only added 20,800, 900 people in the Panhandle? And then we lost right below the Panhandle, 97. We're showing a loss of 340, looks like downtown Lancaster, but to the right of Lancaster, we pick up 238. When you start matching these numbers up, I don't think they add up to the census numbers.
They're pulled directly from the census numbers, but...
Did you check the numbers to see though? I mean, in other words, if you add up page 25, does it truly add up to the difference between the 2010 and the 2020 census? Because that doesn't look like it to me, that's all I'm saying.
I will say, in my experience, census numbers never fully count up to 100%. In the census data that you get every time you download, there is a margin of error that's incorporated into the count. So I've never seen a census report come back at 100% count for everyone. So there will be a small margin of error in those numbers because we're going to take it from the census. The alternative is...
I understand that, but if we're taking it from the census, the census said we grew by so much, whether it was accurate or not. You're taking page 25 and saying it relates to that census, those two counts. I just don't think it does, but I just, but just check it.
So if I could just clarify, so I just did a quick search. So it looks like in 2010, the census was indicating 76,976. So it's about 77,000 residents in Lancaster County. So if you add the difference, it would be about 20,000 more.
And is that, you're saying, so we were at 76,000 and we went to 96,000 from 10 to 20?
Correct. That's what it looks like it's saying.
Now, that's what it's saying, but it's right.
This is based off Wikipedia, so.
I know what it's saying, but is it right? Is it truly go back to the census data is all I'm asking.
May I help you with that?
Yes.
There is no truly right in statistics with demographics. There is a time and point count that will never be 100% the same from day to day. So with the time and point count, we do the best that we can with what we've got because the alternative is for us to take on our own census of the county. The community where I came from had a lot of heartbreak during the 2000 census because of the closing of an airbase where the population had been known to be growing in the municipal area, but because the airbase closed down, the community actually experienced a drop in population of about 7,000 people, which they also felt was inappropriate. The challenge to those numbers is that that mean, those numbers go into how much grant money you get, how many representatives that you get in the House, both the state and the federal House. And once the census puts it down, the census considers that that's the information. So whether it's actually accurate or not, we won't know unless we take our own census, and that's just a little expensive and time consuming and not in the budget. So I ask you to do the best that you can with the data you got.
Way off left field, right field. My whole point is, there's a time and point that the 2010 census said, here's your number in Lancaster. There's a time and point at 2020 where they said, here is your 96,000 whatever number. So there's a difference, and I don't have that in front of me, and I can't Google it quick enough to...
Yeah, it's about 20,000, and the numbers that are in the population change map equal that 20,000.
Then is it?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was concerned about.
It's approximate.
It's government numbers.
Yeah, and again, we'll...
We are the government.
You're part of it. You hate yourself.
He's been in government his whole work career.
These congestion, these road numbers are 2022. Is that correct?
Some of, some of the numbers have been updated, the ones that we had new numbers for. So the, some of the traffic counts and things, Kim Lee Horn is actually our subconsultant on this. They do a lot of the TIA's in the area. So some of the numbers are newer numbers, but as you go through and you're wondering where we pull information from, all of them are cited on the maps that are relevant to those topics. But yes, some of the numbers are going to be more accurate.
Where do they, where do they come from, did you say? Not Alan's, I wanted to know where his numbers come from. So where do these traffic count numbers come from?
Depends on which page we're looking at, but generally, no, the TIA's feed into a lot of the traffic numbers, the SC DOT.
I'm looking at this page. Because I'm just, I'm interested in congestion levels.
I was working with the data today, making a map based on some questions the Planning Commission had for an upcoming rezoning. The information comes from the South Carolina Department of Transportation. They have their own website that'll let you look at the current transportation counts, the average daily traffic or the AADT counts for the station points in the county, actually statewide. You can click on the station point and look at the last three years of county, of change in the county. For instance, the highest rated, most traffic area is the section right at the state line. And then the top five, the other, I was measuring the top five today, and two of them are near Lancaster, the other three are in Indianland, and they're all over 20,000. The one that's up the state is over 30,000, AADT. But all that is done by the engineers at DOT and provided by data out to the public, which we capture and take, so we don't have to pay for it twice.
Yeah, and so on page 160 that you're looking at, right next to the map, it'll have the source information as far as South Carolina Department of Transportation. So you'll see that throughout the entire document when you're looking at where the things are coming from. We tried to do a pretty consistent job with referencing where our information was.
Looked like a pretty impressive document, and it'll make some good, interesting reading.
Hopefully.
Panhandle data, I will say, is very similar to data I've seen at our Pats.
Actually, I got one question backing up on sewer. I really would like for y'all to maybe check what the county, like County Water Sewer and see if they would maybe give us some future plans of where sewer might be, duh, 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 not certain. But we need that information. It would, it would be help us in our planning and stuff like that. But I'm, I don't, I don't know why sewer would have a lot to do with cyber stuff, but I could see, and your water table, your water table, you could, somebody could do something with it as far as I've...
But I have seen...
But sewer, I don't think anybody could damage it, so.
Just for information, in the Freedom of Information Act, those kind of, that kind of material is exempt from both public knowledge as well as intergovernmental transactions. So it's protected even by state law at this point.
It'd just be good to have that information.
Now, that's not to say they could not provide it, you know, amongst the governments with some confidentiality requirements to it. They could potentially do that, but the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act does specifically protect it.
But I have been in some meetings where the Lancaster Water and Sewer have talked about their master plan, maybe not in great detail, but...
Yeah, they have given us...
In skeleton form, and that would be useful to know that piece.
And we have that kind of information skeleton wise, but I wanted to answer your question about sewers in relation to terrorism. Is it, this city of Greensboro, North Carolina, when GIS started coming out online in the early 2000s, I was part of the GIS consortium in South Carolina and North Carolina, and they were putting information out because the engineers had asked for it, everything relating to the water and sewer division, including things like the depth of the manhole and those like things. Well, Greensboro, North Carolina also happens to be a central point for Colonial Pipeline Natural Gas Center, and it has a nine tank farm at the end of the runway of the airport of Greensboro. And they started getting hits on the depth data for the manhole covers around there from Egypt, Iran, Afghanistan, and other Middle Eastern countries. And for reference, if you wonder why that's important, you could pack, how much C4 can you pack between the water line and the manhole cover was one of the challenges that the emergency managers came up with.
I don't think we need to talk about this.
So that data came offline pretty quickly, and that became a story that started the standard bearing for security for data because a lot of people that use GIS and map data want it to be available to anybody because we want to share data, because we, it'd be easier for us if we could get your data and you could get ours and we could have a better picture. But some things have to be behind that, either a paywall or an agreement.
I'd prefer to have a more private conversation about these specific matters.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Okay, we're going to move on to item 6C, roads, plan, and transportation sales tax. Mr. Marstall and Mr. Kato.
Mr. Vice Chairman and council members, as Mr., excuse me, Kato comes forward. We've had two conversations about this topic to consider how we think about growth going forward and keeping up with growth, knowing that we have some school plans that are emerging, how we think about our road network, what we've done to date. And so Mr. Kato is going to highlight for you again some of the progress, but see if we can get some consensus from council if there is an appetite to look at a different funding source that would take a timeframe that we'll outline for you today to move forward if you so choose. And so Mr. Kato can take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Just to go back in an update, you know, we did at our retreat back in January, we did a presentation on the possibility of a sales tax just for roads, and we also, a few months ago, came back and gave an update on our transportation road plans, our progress with what we have been doing. So we kind of just wanted to combine these back together as we, as we move forward with some, some ideas and some possibilities for funding sources, for growth effects, everything, including the roadways. And again, just highlighting what we've gone over, Lancaster County has roughly 1,400 miles of publicly maintained roadway. 900 of those belong to the SC DOT, 500 or so are county or other municipality miles. And as we said last time, there are more and more in the future coming forward, more and more private miles of road, but that's not what we're here to discuss this evening, but just wanted to throw that in there. And from 2018 through 2024, we're going to have about 98, close to 100 miles paved based on the funding sources that we've had during this timeframe. Capital Sales Project 2 had some roadway projects on it. Capital Sales Project 2, the Proviso, and Capital Sales Project 3 will have some more road projects on it. We have a Lancaster County Transportation Committee, which controls your C funds and your gas tax and selects and recommends road projects in Lancaster County. And we have a little bit of our road fee dedicated now to preservation and contractual projects to, to help with the very strained infrastructure of county maintained roads. And we have a lot of future needs already that have been identified, but absolutely no funding source. Harrisburg Road is going to need to be widening for all the development, possible schools and such up there. Henry Harris is an outlet for 521. And then, of course, too, the big one, we all know it's out there, things are coming, but they're going to need probably more funding for some widening of Highway 521. And then county SC DOT, we got road and bridge maintenance and replacement. All that's going to keep coming. It's going, and things are going to continue to deteriorate and need maintenance and rehabilitation. And then those cost estimates, just of those projects, are roughly over $200 million. We did some research on, on like some upgrading the 521 widening to, you know, getting prepared for the widening after the widening. We're looking at like burying power lines, making it more street productive, things of that. There are no plans for that. That, that stuff's going at about $2 million a mile. I mean, it's expensive. Harrisburg Road to widen it now traditionally, I mean, costs are very high because you have to look at where these things would fall. If we had the money today, we couldn't start the project for two or three years. So you got to project, you got to work real hard to get your estimates on that. So that's, that's looking at roughly $850,000 per mile. Most of the roads like that would be done in phases, so you have to have a plan, you have to have a pretty good plan together. And to have a plan together, you need a dedicated funding source. Municipality roads that are, you know, mostly DOT are in high need of rehabilitation, and costs for those looking at over $650,000 a mile. And then, of course, you have other, other transportation type improvements such as bike lanes, intersection improvements, safety improvements. Those things are, can be identified, and again, they'll need funding. I know one thing that the county and the DOT around here has looked at and we have on the horizon are some traffic roundabouts. They do seem to work well in Lancaster County with traffic flow. We started researching those and had to research them twice, but actually a roundabout right now is going for about $2 million bucks. And again, your current funding estimates are the Capital Sales Project 2 Proviso. We have $9 million in that to be completed by 2025. CTC is generating about $1.4 billion a year. And as we saw during this, from the 98 miles from 2014 to 2025, we were able to have some extra funding from CTC in years past. The Lancaster County was very aggressive, their CTC got that money out and spent as quickly as they could for the times we're in. But as we saw again this year, anticipating some, it didn't get it. So we went from hopefully a $4.7 million extra one-time funding to about a $400,000 extra one-time funding. If that number, if that trend were to continue, you're looking at basically $1.4 million a year to do county administered roadway work in Lancaster County. So an option to complete future road needs is a dedicated funding stream. And then just again, the background with it, the original local option, sales tax does not disqualify a county from having other sales taxes. The 2022 amendment has language that Lancaster County can't have a capital penny or a transportation penny, but not both. That language has been eliminated. And then, subject to a successful referendum, Lancaster County can have the capital cent... And then, subject to a successful referendum, Lancaster County can have the capital city sales tax and transportation thing, provided the SC Attorney General agrees. That's very important that we, you know, you're going to need that agreement just to, to make sure, and we'll talk a little bit more, more about that with the timeline. Legislation provides that 1% can run concurrently with the other sales tax, and you can impose for no more than 25 years in the aggregate or in smaller increments. And revenue estimates at, you know, roughly $15 million a ye-, uh, per year. That's 375 million total at the full, 1%, 281, 250 at 75% of the penny, and then 187, 500 at a half a percent or half a penny. And then four counties have a transportation sales tax. That is Berkeley, Charleston, Dorchester, and Richland, with Ori County discussing. And two counties have three local sales taxes, Berkeley and Charleston, again with Ori talking about it. But these counties' third tax, which is why we talked about making sure we had the Attorney General opinion correct on this, these counties have a third tax, but that third tax is authorized by the General Assembly. And then sales taxes by counties, as you can see Lancaster County is currently, you know, at 8%, so, you know, with a additional 1%, we would move to 9% along with Ori, Myrtle Beach, uh, Berkeley, and Charleston, I believe. Okay. Now, the future transportation plan is a necessity, and obviously growth's going to dictate. Large transportation project will take time and funding, so it'll be critical, critical to locate and utilize a dedicated funding stream. And C funds, road fees, and portions, portions of capital sales projects, uh, dedicated will, won't be close to enough to do, I mean, we've done so much with them and so grateful for them, but it won't be close enough to do the things that are on the horizon that now the county probably not just going to be wants, but will probably be needs, and most of that, again, growth driven. Uh, the new county strategic plan focuses on optimizing funding sources and reducing dependence on the property tax. And so a project sales tax for roads only for a future capital sales project tax is the best solution currently. I mean, it, it, it really is. My opinion, it, it really is. You can't really depend on, you know, you could raise your road fee and, and, and raise taxes and, and get more C funds, but again, it's just a drop in, but compared to the needs that we're going to have countywide. Okay? And then some process options. County council can just identify as a list of projects. Uh, you can establish a transportation authority to identify a list of projects. You can utilize the CTC to identify a list of projects. And since I'm here talking about it, I'll tell you, I think that's the best way to do it. You have a wonderful transportation committee. Uh, they've done this, utilized them like number three says, for not just your capital sales two, but your first capital sales had some rows on it. CTC recommended the roads to, the, the projects to be done, and they were done. And even they, even they had a advisory committee, a, a sales tax committee, but they also deferred out the recommendations from the CTC, because they've been doing it a long time, like I said. You have an excellent transportation committee in Lancaster County. And then again, all this with a timeline. Okay? It's fast, that's a lot of work. Okay? So we're just going to shoot through the high points here, but, you know, uh, January to April 2024, you have to determine potential projects and recommend to county council with estimated costs. Again, dealing with such large amounts of money and a, in my opinion, a long timeframe, those estimates got to be, got to be good, and you got to project. You can't do everything in year one. I mean, we could, ideally, we'd want to, but you can't. So you gotta, you gotta prioritize these things, you gotta know how to schedule them, and you gotta know how that money's going to pay for them. May 28, 2024, you need the first reading of an ordinance to set referendum and provide the ballot question, and that is the latest date for that. And then August 1, 2024, voter registration, uh, needs an approved ordinance. September, October, 2024, you have to really get out and have an educational campaign. And then November, 2024, a general election. So again, I know that's, that's a lot, but it, it is something, you know, we, we need to discuss, and if we're going to do it, we need to get working on it. Turn it over to any questions for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kato. Are there any questions for Mr. Kato? Any comments?
Can we go back to that first slide? That's where I lost him. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Good job, Jeff.
Well, as you do think about your conversation deliberations, as we said, the state statute is over 25 years. It can be split up. You can do 10 years and have an amount and a couple of projects, see how that goes, and go back to the voters again for another five-year program or whatever it may be. And also, you have leeway, it's up to 1%. And so again, if you want to think about the project needs, we know there'd be some cost share probably for 521, but thinking about the different needs and what it costs per mile, to think about how many projects, and if there's a threshold of comfort, a half a penny or whatever it may be, you do have some different ways to craft this if you'd so choose.
I, I think is, if you look at it, you know, we're projecting out 15 million a year. I think, you know, we're going to have growth, and we have a historic track record of what that growth is. We could actually do projections out that far and see what we were looking at. But, uh, when you're looking at like a big project just starting with 521, $115 million for just one road, um, you know, if you don't go for the whole penny, you're, you're basically putting all your eggs in one basket and, and nobody else is going to get benefit from it. And to make this equitable, we, we know we're going to have, I don't know if you want to call it super projects or whatever, but you're going to have big project, but then you're going to also have those, those neighborhood projects where you go in and pave neighborhood roads and things like that, and they're going to be smaller projects. But, you know, in my opinion, we need to go for the penny and, and go out for the 25 years. It's been done in other counties and been very successful in other counties.
Thank you. And I'll.
When did they start and how long a period did they go for? They did it for penny.
They, they started, you know, they started their penny, and, you know, their penny is similar to our capital product sales tax penny, except it's 100% dedicated to roads. And I think that's, they're getting ready to either go into number seven or number eight, and, you know, they run for seven years, so they've been doing this for over 40 years now.
I think, though, to be clear, that they did not exercise a transportation penny. They just put.
They just used their capital project sales.
Sales tax. So they fall under a local option for capital project sales tax, all dedicated. They could now come back and do a transportation penny in addition to that, just to.
Which explains why they did seven and seven. But you're saying, Dennis, like you said, that would go about 25 years.
Current legislative language.
But you did say that it needed the blessing of the Attorney General? Was that correct?
We, we want to highlight in that we'll let the attorney speak, but, um, we're at a place here where there would be three local taxes on there. I'll give her a second. But what to highlight with that is to ensure how that structure, they would knows also what the 1% would add to our local tax, 9%. So to think about the tax rate as well, but to give the update on the AG info.
So, so just for background, as, as Mr. Kato highlighted, the law used to not allow you to have a capital penny as well as a transportation penny at the same time. In 2022, the legislature changed that and allowed you to have two pennies at one time. Lancaster has a lost, a local option sales tax also, which is a 1% as well. So there is some confusion the way the new legislation was written. Will it allow a local government body, a county, to implement three pennies at one time as opposed to two? I have spoken with the Attorney General's office, and that seemed to perk their ears up a little bit when I mentioned it to them, so they are going to get us an expedited opinion, because obviously if you go down this path and it's not legal, that could be a lot of problems. So if we get the blessing from the Attorney General, that's not going to be mandatory law for a, a court to follow, but it is persuasive. So that's why we're, we're pursuing that path, because we would be the only county in South Carolina to have three locally imposed sales taxes. There are a couple other counties that have three, but there's one that is imposed by the General Assembly. It's an education capital improvement tax. So we'd be the only ones in the state to have three locally imposed.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of the full 1 cent, especially if, if there is a targeted, um, road projects that voters can support. But I think before we even discuss it anymore, we need to know whether the Attorney General's going to let.
Absolutely, and I did contact them, they, I spoke with them Monday, and they said if I could get them an email requesting an opinion, they'd have something turned around as quickly as possible. They understood the timeframe. I explained to them within November 2024 election, and the process we'd have to go through, we'd need something back very quickly.
Yeah, and sometimes it takes this council a long time to decide some.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't think we need to wait on the Attorney General. I think we can do January through April now, and if he comes back and says no, we still have some pretty good ideas of what's needed anyway. So if we hesitate, you're right, Terry, we just kick it down the road, and it takes a long time to get anything done. So I would say this, and again, I'm, I'm only in favor of this if the voters are in favor of it. I'm not, I, I really hate the idea of us having three individual taxes, but if that's what the voters want, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, I, I think that's why the General Assembly on these optional sales taxes left it up to the voters, because it gives the voters the right to, to key in. Uh, you know, one thing you need to remember is that there is a certain percentage of that percentage sales tax is going to be paid for people, by people outside of Lancaster County. And, uh, you know, I, the background on this was, is you had two or three counties that had this penny transportation tax, and when one of them came up for renewal, the Speaker of the House says, "We're not passing this for just one county. If we're going to have it, we're going to make it optional for the whole state." So that, that's why this law has just been recently changed.
And also keep in mind that as it's structured now, the capital product sales tax does have a sunset on it in five years. And so again, we'd have to go back to the voters, and so it may only be for a few years that you have the three options, but again, if you want to go forward and let the voters determine if we want to do a capital project sales tax for, um, and how much you want to build on that, I think that informs how this one goes. But so, general feedback, as we can go forward, Jeff certainly will start due diligence on some road projects. We've outlined some, again, to coincide where some of the schools are going. Harrisburg Road, do you think about those of 521? We don't know what a state and federal match would be for 521, but trying to put some of that data and information together to see if we can come up with some things. We can go to CTC, um, so think about the process. We have a little bit of time, um, but if we start with these initial road projects, do you want us to start sending them to CTC? Do you want to think about a different advisory group to bring them? We'll do a lot of in-house work here for the next two months. And then I just need some direction about how you want that vetted by a public group. It can be you, it can certainly be the council, but if you want CTC or like a capital product sales tax process, you can have a citizen committee as well.
I, I would encourage us to follow what Jeff Kato was recommending. I think if we go through CTC, that would be my preference. That's what they're there for, that's what they're providing.
To recommend to us for final approval.
Yes.
That would be my suggestion to do a fine job.
Also mine.
And, and the key that we have to remember on all this is to get those monies from the state, the infrastructure bank or whoever, to get those monies to be able to put on roads, you got to have money to match. And if you got money to match it, you're in the front of the line. If you don't have money, you don't need to even be talking to them about it. And there's organizations that, you know, RFAT's organization will be there to help to, to get matches, uh, the COG also, and, you know, between state and federal matches for, for large projects like 521, I think that's imperative that we need to be able to include those in there. Any other comments? Not, thank you, Mr. Kato.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to move on now to item 6D, review of intergovernmental agreements for Kershaw and Heath Springs municipalities, Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir, thank you. We wanted to give you an update on where we stand so far in the intergovernmental agreements. Um, I put in your packet a little bit of history on the intergovernmental agreements and the, the operations that we have done for development services for the municipalities. When we were going through the intergovernmental agreement work and looking at the list of, of services that we provide as a county for the municipalities, we started looking at everything from building to zoning to planning and stormwater. We came across while we were working on this, uh, information about when we had been providing services for Van Wick and when we had stopped providing services for Van Wick, but it came up in conversation that we have not stopped giving all services to Van Wick. We still provide stormwater services, and we still provide building services. And we were talking just about Heath Springs and Kershaw. Now we want to go ahead and put Van Wick in the mix as well, get them all handled at once. So we are stepping back to make sure that we've got those incorporated. And I don't know if you saw the news recently this week about, um, City of Rock Hill and the Rock Hill School District are going to court over their intergovernmental agreements. It's given me a reminder that we really need to make sure we've got it in a good place and that we can perform the activities that we have in that agreement. And if there's any need for, uh, revenue in streams and that, that we'll cover that as well.
Do we have any kind of agreements with the city of Lancaster?
Not currently, no, sir.
Any questions?
We will highlight, we did put in your packet, we get letters and ordinances, so the towns of Kershaw and Heath Springs have already taken action on their side to reaffirm that the county can deliver these services in their jurisdiction, which is pretty more important for zoning code enforcement, um, if we're going there to do action, that we have that authority. So they've done that. Once we finalize, we have a draft agreement we're putting together for each of the three different ones. We'll get those back out to them for review and then ask them to adopt them as we bring it to you, because we need to execute that from our end, to do the intergovernmental agreements themselves. Because now, one of the things I'm cautioning is that we have our staff, and our staff serves county and the municipalities. If the, if the municipalities are looking for enhanced services, or they're really saying we've got more zoning code enforcement issues that need to be addressed, and we can't meet what they think our service needs, that will bring up other conversations about staffing and service levels. But also, we're looking at a provision, is there a baseline of services? And if they want enhanced services, would there be a cost for that? Um, so that's one of the things we're kind of looking at right now. Um, so trying to manage expectations among the municipalities and what our staff capabilities are, as well as what the ordinance allows for these services.
This may lead into a need for additional staff, um, so we're going to try and do this carefully and then monitor it closely to see how much of an impact would be.
But the next step's going to be just a basic intergovernmental agreement. If they're not satisfied, I don't think we're going to be able to identify the level of service. That's so esoteric, but, um, then if, then if we're not providing enough, then, then that's where we would get into.
But there's some degree of specificity that we are trying to manage expectations. I'm trying to, what, I'm trying to think of some examples that we were talking about.
Well, some examples we talked about is that, um, code enforcement handles, uh, sometimes I handle complaints about trash and dumping on private properties. There are already a lot of those that are happening in our current jurisdiction in the county that we are not as, not as caught up on as we'd like to be. It's very difficult for us to get caught up in code enforcement, because we're having trouble getting staff additional to it. Now, the staff that I have are doing the great, they're doing great, and they're doing the best job that they can, with an increased interest in having someone else do the service. Occasionally, you'll get people to think, okay, that means that I can call, you know, every week that I see something, I'm going to do something and going to call them down. And, um, the distance between our service area, of course, is huge. So it's a management function for how do you get the services out there? Do you respond to all the calls in one district on one day? Do you let them go for one day so you have efficiency in your delivery? Do you go out every day with, um, down to Kershaw or Heath Springs and then back, which is a, a drive, takes up a lot of staff time? So we're looking at all those ankles for that.
Now, if the municipality has a different code than the county, where does code enforcement then?
Code enforcement would be for the, uh, code that the municipality adopted.
But so the county would be responsible for enforcing those codes?
Yes.
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know. They want to be a town, they should.
I understand.
There's going to be a cost to that, too.
Well, we looked at that, too. Um, there's a lot of parts of the UDOs for both Heath Springs and Kershaw that don't apply in the county and that they have several sections. in the county, and that they have several sections of code that are different because they're a municipality. One example is they have a lot smaller lot sizes than we allow in the county regulations right now. We don't have a zone that allows for 5,000 square foot lots outright, but they do, because they're in, you know, more dense urban districts. In the past, when we provided services to Heath Springs and Kershaw under previous casual agreements, we still did that. So that's been the practice that had been in place before.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, I think we should treat all municipalities the same, but I'm a little concerned about enforcing municipality codes.
It's been a discussion point, for sure.
I would agree with Councilmember Graham. My concern is if we're adding services because the town has delineated additional ordinances and requirements that we don't currently have, then we're adding, to your point, additional staff and risk on our side, and I think we should have compensation for that.
It's part of our discussion, for sure.
Yeah, because you not only got to look at the codes, but you also got to look at the legal validity of the codes.
One thing that I'm doing a study on right now is how much have we approved simple Platts in the past, like surveys? When you go to buy your house, if you get a survey of the property and you want to record it, it comes through the, the county offices. If you've done a subdivision or if you've done a modification, it has to be approved by staff. I'm looking back in the archives to see how much we did on that for Heath Springs and Kershaw, if at all, because that is another level of legal responsibility. At the time that we as staff stamp it, we would be assuring that we had reviewed it for the proper lot size, the proper setbacks, the proper delineation of floodplains and the like on those Platts. It's a level that I don't recall, because I've only been here for less than a year, that we have done, but I have to dig back into the records and see what we've done.
And I would think Van Wyk's going to have a very different UDO than the county.
Well, Van Wyk does not want us to enforce their UDO. They've got a arrangement now with the Council of Government, and they have a planner that works with them on a regular basis, but they do still employ our building services and our stormwater services.
So one other question that I have on the state law citation, it says, "The agreement must specify the procedures for the exercise of powers granted in the chapter and shall address the issue of equitable representation of the municipality and the county on the boards and commissions authorized by this chapter." What does that mean?
What that means is that if you're going to have a joint county planning and city planning department or division, that there would be equitable representation on the planning commission. In the past, apparently, we had a joint planning commission when we started in 94, and at that point, there were, I think it was like 16 members, do you, 17 members? So there was a member for each of the, the districts, there was a member for each of the cities, there was a member for the water and sewer division, there was a member for, was it DOT was on one? But that's, that's big.
Oh, Mr. Blackman.
So, so would that add potentially additional members to these commissions?
Ms. Harden, if I may.
I got that, too, but you go.
Councilmember Louise, we do have in the IGA that we are proposing at the moment and that we are working on, the municipalities would have to waive their right to representation, so it would remain the planning commission that we currently have. They would have to actively waive that right to go through this equitable representation.
That's legally enforceable for them to be able to waive that right?
It is, as long as they, as long as they pass this, which is, as Administrator Marsall was saying, we will both be simultaneously passing ordinances that will have the contents of the IGA included, so they will legally be giving up the right to have the equitable representation because they agree to what we already have.
I think the language that is used is that we both agree that there is currently equitable representation in the form that we have now.
The district, because of the district lines.
On the planning commission in particular, because they are, the planning commission, and Chairman Deese is in the audience, I want to thank him for being here, the planning commission would be making rulings on things that happen in the cities of, or the towns of Kershaw and Heath Springs, and there is at least one person representing that district in the, on the planning commission. They would have to say that person is adequate for it.
As a refresher, Van Wyk has created their own planning commission now, so they, that will not be incorporated into their IGA.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Harden. We're going to take a ten minute break, and we'll be back and start on the Lancaster County Detention Center project update. We'll give you five minutes. Talk fast, Chan. Okay, we are back. Mr. Catledge, we're going to go into Lancaster County Detention Center project update, Mr. Marsall and Mr. Catledge. Good to see you, Mr. Catledge, and I was only kidding about the five minutes.
Okay, good. It's good to be here.
Well, Mr. Vice Chair and Councilmembers, on the heels of your actions of Monday night to finalize the funding source for the detention center and the regional park, we now have our authorization to move forward with this project. And so Mr. Catledge has a timeframe for you and some initial purchases. We'll look to start and give you a timeline and hopefully we'll have completion as well. So, Mr. Catledge?
Members of council, thanks again for letting us be before you and presenting you an update on a fantastic project here in Lancaster County. Tonight, we'll go briefly over our design development completion, which is our stage currently in design, present you a high-level design development budget and a schedule update. Just to refresh our minds, this is a layout, Highway 9 being to the north of the screen. The proposed detention center, you see existing sheriff buildings are pointed out and a future CSI building that is happening under a separate contract. And so our site development continues and it's going really well. As I mentioned, we're at the design development stage of design, so we started with concept, moved through schematic design, which was our last presentation to you. Now we're at design development. Our next phase, which we've started this week, will be moving into construction documents. But at design development, we did a pricing exercise with our construction manager, and this is a high-level breakdown showing our estimated construction cost at this point. It's just over 74 million with the ancillary project cost being at 15 and a total budget of 90 million. At schematic design, we had a full project budget just under 90 million. And so we just rounded it with some escalation adjustments and whatnot. So we've been managing that very well, excited to where.
Are these inflation numbers built in?
We do. So at our schematic design level, we had escalation line items, design contingency line items. So we have eaten into those to stay at our budget here. We're seeing escalation, but we still have some escalation funds left and some design contingency funds left in our budget as well.
Thank you.
To help mitigate some of our future escalations, we have an amendment one we have presented in the construction management at risk contract. You have a basic contract that locks in things like fee and general conditions and those sort of things. We amend that contract every time we're ready to lock in purchases. Our first amendment would be for $23 million to Ajax. You'll notice that's about almost a third of the construction contract we're able to lock in, and this is for one package, the detention equipment and security electronics package, which we have gone through a bid process through the construction manager's procurement methods. Staff was part of those interviews and bidding process and pretty excited to present Pauley Jail as our selected DEC contractor, which is, has a value of $23 million. And so that amendment's been presented to Dennis, and that will be for locking in, let me go through kind of a highlight of it. 209 modular cell units with all its detention doors, hardware at the desk, toilets, plumbing fixtures and lights associated with cells, mezzanine walkway railing associated stairs with those, four padded cells, 193 security hollow metal frame doors, frames and hardware, 136 commercial hardware doors and frames, detention furniture, which is day room tables, detention stools and seating, security and standard glazing and glass throughout the building, detention grade plumbing fixtures in holding areas and areas outside of the cells, a water management system with all of our detention grade fixtures and our complete security electronics package. So our next steps, again, we're at design development here at the end. We've completed design development. We've gone through our preliminary GMP for our deck detention equipment package, security electronics package. So we're here in the beginning of October. We've just begun our construction documents and permitting stage, which will run through probably the end of February. By the end of April, mid-June, at the latest, we should have all of our final amendments to our construction contract, be able to issue that and start construction in the summer with a two-year construction period ending at the end of July 2026. So that is high-level update. Is there any questions?
A question for the sheriff. So sheriff, that means, I guess, we would be looking at more detention center officers in the FY '26 year because you'll be training them, hiring them and training them that year? Or are we looking at maybe? And if you still backed it back up. Do it. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, do we even hire before that red line there of staff training? It's just something to think about. We're not going to decide tonight, but.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but you got to give me more. Next year.
Right, right. Very good. Thank you.
The, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Louise.
I was going to say, as part of this process, when we're going through the construction documents permitting, the bid packages and starting the actual construction of the building, is there the possibility of kind of moving some of this up by getting the site work, planning documents completed in one phase, completing the rest of the building so that you can be working on the site work while you're doing the construction of the building?
Absolutely. So we hope to come back with amendment number two, which would be our site package sooner than April, yes. We would like to, I don't think we'll really get through our permitting until mid-Jew, June, and so construction start being site work there in July.
Okay.
I don't think we can get it done any faster.
Okay. So you're already anticipating that in these metrics?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We will probably have at least four amendments, our number four being our largest amendment, pulling in the balance of our mainly architectural level subcontract packages. Site would probably be a separate package. We would get early to procuring some of those systems, and there'll be one other, hopefully for electrical gear, some long lead items.
Okay. Thank you.
The sales, if you can back up one, I think it's one. Are the sales coming in prefabricated as a whole unit or are they coming in in components?
They'll be prefabricated. The cells that we settled on are actually made just north of Atlanta at Steel Cell America, and they're steel constructed cells with a polyurethane coating on the inside. They're finished. They come in as a finished product. We just make connections in the back and connect the security electronics to the lock sets.
Other questions? Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our last item is, I'll have the sheriff come up, funding assistance for uniforms, item 6F. Sheriff Field.
All right, council, I appreciate this opportunity, and I'm coming to you tonight to request additional funding to update our current uniforms or actually to change our current uniforms. You know, over the years, under the prior administration, we went to gray shirts, and over the years, the dyes and fabrics changed, which has resulted in officers just not matching. And of course, I'm a big stickler about wanting to look sharp, and I think the public would expect that from the officers, so we want to change our uniforms. We've talked to several vendors and they've advised that the best thing for us to do was go to a black, all-black uniform, which would be the same in name and would match and shouldn't ever have a problem. I'm hoping that's the case, but once we do that, we would have to change the shirts, the vest that goes on them, as well as the handcuff cases and the other gear that goes on the vest. And I'm asking for an additional $55,000 to what we currently have to make this change.
Okay. Is there any questions?
You know, that would be a year-round uniform?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That would give them two short-sleeved shirts, two long-sleeved shirts and the vest, and the next year, we would try to budget, you know, get them a few more.
Very, you know, first impression goes a long way with me. I mean, I believe in that, and I think police officers need to fit to those standards and stuff, looking neat and look professional.
I appreciate that, and we preach that all the time about setting the standard, you know, in law enforcement, and I agree with you, first impression, you know, assess the tone, you know, when we're writing.
This didn't come up on your original budget, but it's coming up now. Why, why is that?
It didn't. Well, you know, if you talk to the vendors, they'll promise you the next time it'll be right, and that next time just never happens. So we've decided to make the change.
I don't, I do, I do agree that anybody in uniform needs to look the part.
Any other comments?
So based upon tonight's conversation, we will look to have on the 23rd agenda budget amendment related to this for your first consideration.
All right. Okay, we have finished our agenda. If there's no other comments, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Mr. Graham. We have a second, don't have to have a second, but all in favor, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
It's early, didn't it, Brian? And we covered everything. We really didn't rush nothing, neither. Just blowed right along. Really good.